Call this meeting to order on 17th of November in City Hall. Please rise if able for the invocation. Lord, be with us today as always. Help and guide us so that we can bring your kingdom of peace and love and understanding and forgiveness to all the people. Amen. Thank you. Derek, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Gladly, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Caramba?
Here.
Councilmember Pardon?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilmember Corey?
Here.
Councilmember Gibson?
Here.
Councilmember Forbes?
Here.
Okay, number five is approval of the agenda. Are we like to make some adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. If we could, staff would like to pull item F and G. Item F, I'll be addressing under City Manager Items. We just have an update on that. And item G, there's some additional information that will need to be prepared by staff and the applicant, so that will be coming at a future meeting.
Well, thank you. Can we take a vote on that? Change? A move to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Caramba?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, number six. Mayors, welcome. You're all welcome. I'm glad to see you're here today. We have an exciting agenda today. Anything that's on the agenda can be commented on at this time. If you come forward with a public comment on anything on the agenda, there's nothing restricted. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Shall I sit at the microphone?
Please go to the microphone. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tim Dempsey, and I'm a resident of Benita Springs for the past 20 years.
Great.
I graduated from Florida International University in Miami many, many years ago, so I've been in Florida. I'm originally from, a farm boy from Vermont, and I have a lot of experience in the outdoors. And I am advocating with the city to start a volunteer organization that would like to be a steward of the Benita Nature Place. I have a lot of experience in trail maintenance. I used to manage the Green Mountain Stock Farm in Vermont, which is a rather large piece of property, about 1,500 acres, that had a number of multi-use trails, all non-motorized. And I'd like to bring that expertise to the Benita Nature Place. And we're experiencing, I spend a lot of time out there, I love it, it's beautiful, but we're experiencing a little bit of erosion, and I think there's some sacred areas out there, such as Mount Benita. And I would love to be able to use my experience in volunteering, being a steward, and encouraging others to join me, and just maintaining and taking some ownership in that as a citizen of Benita, and see if I can draw up some interest and just make it a nicer place for us all to enjoy.
Okay, is that the Column Trail also?
The Column Trail is all part of that. The city has trails out there. There's a number of different trails. I'm not sure of the exact makeup because I haven't been involved much to be, but I've spent a lot of time on the trails. But it's a flooding area that experiences a lot of water at certain times of the year.
Very good. You're looking for a big paycheck, you're on. Yeah, you work with Matt Feeney here. He's the Public Works Director and Assistant City Manager. He'll set you up and let you work. I hope so, right, Matt?
Yes, we've already met, as well as with Nicole from Parks and Rec, to talk about Mr. Dempsey's proposal.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, consent agenda. Do I move the consent agenda? I make a motion to move it?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please, or vote?
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Caramba?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have any comments on the agenda that we just passed? Yes, Amy.
I just want to say that I'm pleased to see that we have our first three houses for the buyout program, and hopefully with the proper, appropriate funding, we could have more, and I'm glad to see that program getting off the ground.
Yes, I'd like to clarify something on that. They're purchasing it at the current market value. Now, originally, I thought it was going to be the market value before Irma, but as explained by the city manager, normally after a flood, the property values go down. But people love Benita so bad, so much, that they're moving in, and it's only fair to give them the market value at today's prices. So, and there's $5 million available, so the people in that area, if you're interested in getting out of the flood area, please come and see us. Thank you. Okay, so we have to 9A, is that Jesse?
Right.
Red Ribbon Week.
Sir, do we have, do we have representative? Right.
Jesse's is lazy on with the Sheriff's Department. Go around from Jesse.
Come right up here. Come right up here.
Okay.
Right, and join us. Ms. Vogel is speaking.
Okay. I think councilmember's going to present, and then we'll have you say a couple words. We're going to take pictures for you, yes.
Thank you for coming. It's great to see you guys. All right. Whereas Red Ribbon Week is devoted to developing a drug-free, healthy future for American citizens, and whereas illegal drug use, abuse, has a direct effect on the capabilities and education of our youth, and whereas drug abuse has a direct effect on our economy and our personal well-being of all citizens, and whereas business, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. Now, therefore, Mayor Rick Steinmeier, city of Benita Springs, and on behalf, and myself, Councilman Jesse Pardon, on behalf of the city of Benita Springs, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to the 31st of 2021 as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Benita Springs, and encourage our citizens to participate in the celebration of claiming our streets and neighborhoods back from drug traffickers, and have a safe and drug-free community for a healthy living. And it's signed by Mayor Rick Steinmeier.
Thank you. All right.
Let's get in the middle. This will take a pick first. Anna, why don't you? Okay. That's Deb's.
Okay, you don't know my secret code. I'm not that good. Well, you know what they say about the governor. There you go. What do they say about the governor? Oh, we got one more. Wait, come on up.
Yay!
I know. I know. I told the small girl.
All right. More than mayor, come on.
You know the angles.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Har.
I can, I'll say a few words. I'll just introduce us quickly. This is Deb, she's the Executive Director for Drug Free Lee. This is Kim Swanson, she's with Lee County Sheriff's Office, and this is Deputy Lisa Barnes with the Cape Coral Police Department. We're all on the board with Drug Free Lee, and I just wanted to talk about kind of what Red Ribbon Week is. It's basically a campaign to raise awareness towards prevention work needed around drug and alcohol abuse, substance abuse in our community. And it's so important for cities, communities, to recognize Red Ribbon Week because it's really, it takes a village to, you know, get drug prevention work moving and going. So, we're really honored to accept this, so thank you for, as a city of Benita Springs, for recognizing Red Ribbon Week. As we are saying, it's a way to bring the community together. Everyone has to recognize it in order for it to work, and that's the whole message behind prevention work, is getting everyone on the same page towards prevention, because it really does take a village. And as a Drug Free Lee Coalition Board and Community, we've done quite a few events in the schools with the SAD Club, Students Against Destructive Decisions. We've done multiple events at the Boys and Girls Club. We've really done a ton of work, as much as we can, in person throughout the Red Ribbon Weeks in southwest Florida. So, it's really important that we keep going into the schools, communities, to raise awareness towards drug prevention, and I think we've all done a great job in raising awareness towards that. Speaking of events, we do have our Abusey Bank Run for Prevention on January 29th at 8:00 at J.C. Park in Cape Coral, and I could send all the information if we don't have that. And then in our own Benita Springs, we have a pickleball tournament. I know it's very popular these days. I'm an avid player myself, so I'm pretty excited about this one, but that is March 24th through the 27th at the Benita Springs YMCA. So, that's going to be a great way to kind of kick off drug prevention in Benita Springs. But like I said, it really does take a huge effort from the community, from our schools, from law enforcement, from the board, really from everyone. So, we're so appreciative to accept this proclamation and accept, you know, the teamwork from the whole community. So, thank you so much, and we're excited to be here.
She's better than I am. Thank you. See you again. Thank you so much. Thank you for the time.
You're welcome. You're welcome. That's a lot. Okay, now we have a Lee Transportation presentation. Come to the microphone, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have members from Lee County, including Commissioner Sandelli, who are going to present about our, a new bus service here available in Benita Springs.
Very good. Hey, welcome, sir.
Good morning. And first of all, congratulations on your new home here renovated. Beautiful. Smells like a new car in here. Looks great, and I'm sure it'll serve you well going forward. You know, it's interesting how the transportation industry is changing. A few months ago, I went on vacation, I did a rental car, and it cost me too much. I got back from Pensacola, too, we did Uber, and the efficiency of the system, the cost of the system works, and it's working in just about every neighborhood. Credit to our team at Lee County and Lee Tran, they do deep dives into everything, what's working, what's not working, how do we improve it, and if we're going to improve it, by what means. And what they came up with is something that I believe in. I think, more importantly, I think it's going to be an asset to the community. Things take time to get started, to get feedback, but the good thing is they're willing to put their thoughts out there, they're willing to listen and to improve it, and, you know, this is the easiest meeting for me to be at because I live right down the road. So, congratulations to all, and I'll have the team do the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, councilmembers, city manager, and staff. My name is Stacy Perkins. I am the Marketing Manager and PIO for Lee Tran. We're excited to announce the new Ultra On-Demand Service that's being offered initially and exclusively to the Benita Springs area as a pilot program beginning in 2022. Ultra will utilize Uber's scheduling and tracking platform, which will allow users to schedule curbside pickups and drop-offs within the designated service area. This is at their complete convenience. This area extends far beyond the current Route 150. The Ultra is replacing, giving riders more flexibility and convenience to their trips. Ultra buses are fully ADA accessible, and rides are still only $1.50. Service, it will be available seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and they will connect to the 600, which is down in Collier, and to the Route 410 in Fort Myers Beach. So, Lee Tran is very excited to be able to provide this new and innovative transit option to the Benita Springs area, and we believe it will give riders the flexibility and convenience that they have not experienced before with public transportation. And we're here to answer any questions as well.
You're going to take the people up to 410?
Yes, it will go all the way.
In that, in that new Ultra bus?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's still a way to get from, get down Hickory Boulevard out to there, but somebody will be in the bus rather than empty.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question for you. As it progresses, and you get marketing material, like a video or something on it, I know, particularly looking at your map, District 5 and 2, there's, a lot of our district is covered in there. I'd like to share it with as many of the folks in my district as I could, so if you have something that would be, you know, easy, accessible type of thing like that, that would be awesome, so. Not pressing if you don't have it now, but in the future, things like that, push them to us, and we'll try to make the pilot a success.
Yeah, and we would love to include you in the video if that would be an option.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And Mayor and Council, we wanted to update you that the County Commission approved the inner local agreement yesterday, and we just want to take an opportunity to thank Robert Cody, Mark Moore, and Dave Harner. Their staff worked very closely with Matt and I, and were able to kind of tweak the map area so that we could have the most meaningful impact on our low-to-moderant-income folks, so that we were trying to get the best service area that we can. They work greatly with us as well on the budgeting, and we continue that partnership. We'll continue an analysis of the need, and at some point in time, if necessary, we would bring back possibly requests for expansion, but this is the beginning of the pilot program, and we're excited to be part of that pilot program.
Very good. Very good.
Motion to approve the...
Second.
Any more comments? Take a vote?
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Caramba?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now, we have a man named John Jenkins from Benita Springs Utilities, going to inform us about our septic tank systems in the area. So, welcome, John.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me. John Jenkins, Benita Springs Utilities. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you today. I'm not familiar with the remote here. How do I?
Forward, backward, and this is, the top one's a pointer.
Okay.
I'll see it on the screen.
Thank you. I've got a short presentation. I'll be speaking about septic tanks, but I thought I'd give you a little bit of the background, a little history as to how we got to where we are today. We do have some work left to do in terms of septic tanks that are in the community, but a lot of that work has already been done, and so we'd like, I think it informs our view of septic tanks today. First, I went back, you know, back in 1988, '89, before BSU was in the wastewater business, when it was just a water company, there was a wastewater research committee that was formed in part as a result of BSU's efforts, but also local community efforts, to investigate the need for a central wastewater system. They had some 16 sample points in Estero Bay and Imperial River. There were high levels of pollutants that they found, they thought caused by improperly treated sewage. There were 69 package plants, we call them, small wastewater plants that were serving the various mobile home parks, commercial shopping centers, and so forth, and they found that many of those were functioning improperly and that they were above capacity. And so, the recommendation from the study, and this is an article from the news press in May of 1990, was to try and move forward with a central wastewater system. BSU got into the business in '91 by buying the wastewater plant that Benita Bay built in order to serve the Benita Bay community, and that is actually located kind of behind the Prado Shopping Center in a fairly centralized portion of town, and BSU purchased that from Springs Environmental Services at the time, and got into the wastewater business, and set about borrowing money to extend wastewater lines throughout the community, starting with the package plants, because that was where they got the most bang for the buck, to tie in those, those plants. And then they got into the gravity expansion program for about 10 years, from 1996 to 2015. So, after a number of these package plants were tied in, BSU investigated extending to individual septic tanks. So, this is an article from the Benita Banner, September of 1995, talking about the community-wide effort to tie in septic tanks. And this was, as I said, 10-year scope, so a large undertaking. This is an article from February of '96, following up on that, and I think what's significant here is, you can see, part of the byline is that BSU expansion plan meets mostly understanding from residents. So, there's a real community support for this and a recognition of the need for it. And it's a little hard to see here, but if you look down on the bottom, you'll see the area that was intended for septic tanks. So, all out on the beach, all along Benita Beach Road, between Benita Beach Road and the river, Imperial River, and then along the river on either side, around Terry Street, and out to I-75. And BSU borrowed about $32 million back in '96 through Lee County and the Industrial Development Authority to help expand a sewer plant and extend sewer lines throughout the community. So, here's what the end result of that was, and this was many years in coming. If you can look at the green areas, you'll see all the areas where the septic tanks and package plants were taken offline. You've got the entire beach area, you've got Benita Beach Road north to Imperial River, you've got pretty much everywhere north of the, between Beach Road and the river, out to I-75, and then you've got the area north of the river, along Terry Street to the south. So, it was really very successful in accomplishing what it set out to do, in replacing about 5,000 package plants, or excuse me, 5,000 septic tanks, and virtually all the package plants, with a few exceptions. And I'll come back to this in just a moment. So, what we have today are two wastewater plants. The original Benita Bay plant has been expanded and upgraded on a number of occasions since 1991, and now is a 7 million gallon a day plant. And the new east plant that you can see east of I-75 when you're driving, driving by, is a better technology, a membrane bioreactor plant, and that was built in '07 with a capacity of 4 million gallons a day. And all of that, the byproducts from the wastewater process are reused, so the liquid is reclaimed water that goes back into the community for irrigation purposes, and the biosolids are treated through a dryer system and turned into pellets, which are sold to a company for use in fertilizer. So, we've managed to deal with both the solid and liquid byproducts.
Good. Good, good, good.
In terms of the collection system, we've got 465 miles of pipe throughout the community and 353 pump stations. I've got a few stats up there. Our staff inspects those every 30 days. We've got 25 fixed generators, because that's always the issue when we have hurricanes and other events, where we've got to continue to maintain the collection system without power. So, we've got 25 fixed generators and a fleet of mobile generators that our staff uses for that purpose. You've got a wastewater collection map, the green pipes are our collection and transmission system, the yellow dots are the pump stations, and as you can see, it's pretty thoroughly covers the entire community.
A lot of them.
Yeah, so, and then what do we do with that? We have, we know what we have out there because we have a CCTV maintenance, our utility maintenance department tries to video up to 10% of our collection system every year, so we have current information on what's out there. These are professionals. These guys are certified. They use this NASCO, National Association of Sewer Companies Sewer Service Rating System. So, when they're TVing this, they're assessing the pipe, they're trying to find defects, they're rating it, they're trying to identify for us where we have problems, where we need to go back and spend dollars to repair, and where piping is good. We also now fund wastewater R&amp;R, and we've targeted Spanish wells that we've gone in there and done pipe replacement, manhole upgrades, pump station upgrades. We're going to continue to do that throughout the community. I know the issue of clay pipe has come up. We have about 27,000 feet of clay pipe. I mean, that's compared to a total of 2.4 million feet of pipe, so it's about 1%. It's concentrated in four areas in town. There's one section of Imperial Benita, excuse me, Imperial Harbor of Benita, there's Lightner Creek area, there's one section of Imperial Benita Estates, and there's an area in the State Street area, the old 3S system. So, that's kind of between Pennsylvania and Carolina, and, I don't know, Garrett, and over to the, to the east. So, there are a few other areas where there are clay pipe, but in those areas, we've got those TVed, we know they're conditioned, we're going to consider making any repairs or replacements of that pipe consistent with our overall program of wastewater R&amp;R. So, what's left? In round numbers, there are about 1,000 septic tanks in the community. About half of those are in the San Carlos Estates subdivision. There are others in an area we call Paradise Shangri-La. We've got a couple of them over here, east of 75, Sun Village, north of Terry, and San Souci, south of Terry, and we've got an area in Belleville, which is north of Citrus Park. And then we've got some other areas up here in Estero, not very well-developed, but there are a few septic tanks up in there. Now, there are certainly septic tanks randomly out, particularly out east, and, not in communities, but in one-off, you know, five-acre type lots, and those are likely to stay out there because they're, it's not typically financially feasible to replace them. Retrofitting neighborhoods is quite expensive, but that's generally what is left in the community. BSU did undertake a feasibility study. They hired Johnson Engineering in 2002 to do a feasibility study in the San Carlos Estates area, and what that found was the groundwater is about four or five feet deep there, and the limestone strata, the cap rock, is between eight and 21 feet. Well, we have to put in a gravity system between four and 18 feet deep, so, long and short of it is, it would be a very difficult place to put in a gravity system like we have in the rest of the community, very expensive, you're trying to dig through rock, you're going to have the piping underwater a large portion of the time. And so, it was determined at that time that it was not really financially feasible to proceed with a replacement of septic tanks out in that area. And these are large lots on septic that better accommodate some of those impacts from septic tank. So, just to give you an idea, I mean, we understand that's the largest physical area, and we've looked at that in the past. So, just to, this just gives you some of the background on that. So, you know, to wrap up, our current approach is kind of a balanced approach with regard to the septic tanks. First of all, try and stop any new ones from going in. We want to extend service wherever we can. Second, look for funding opportunities. It's quite expensive to retrofit in these neighborhoods, and we really need some, you know, if we can get some grant funds or other assistance, that's going to help drive down the cost for these residents who are going to be expected to shoulder some of that expense. We're looking for synergies with adjacent landowners, so for example, the redevelopment of an area like Benita Golf and Country Club, we might work with a developer to oversize pump stations and try and tie in some areas that might not have sewer that we could take off septic tank. And then just kind of look at what opportunities come and where to spend our dollars to try and take, take the balance of the septic tanks out. So, you know, I think it's, I would say from our perspective, you know, a lot of this legwork has been done. Like I said, there's still some more to do. We, you know, there's more of a focus on septic... And then just kind of look at what opportunities come and where to spend our dollars to try and take, take the balance of the septic tanks out. So, you know, I think it's, I would say from our perspective, you know, a lot of this legwork has been done. Like I said, there's still some more to do. We, you know, there's more of a focus on septic tank replacement, and that's great. We think there may be more funding coming, made available for that. And if it comes, we certainly would like to work with the city and take the opportunity to try and address the balance of the septic tanks in the area. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions, and thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, Fred Forbes.
Yeah, what, what I was going to say, at a event I was at, Senator Rick Scott made a statement that made a lot of sense to me. He said he didn't agree with a lot of this deficit spending that we're doing, but he sure as heck wanted to make sure that Florida got its fair share. And there's a ton of money out there right now, not only for the septic tank, but the clay pipe conversion. And we should go aggressively to get it, because that's an opportunity to get Benita healed up in any areas that we still have a problem. And John's doing a great job, and I think, I think we, I think we can get a lot more money than we're getting. Every time I turn around at a Florida League of Cities event, I'm talking to other cities that would, that have gotten and just been gotten awards for septic tank conversion, pipe conversion, all that stuff. So it's there now, probably won't be in two or three years, but we need to get it while it's getting as good.
Is that John's responsibility to go?
I think it's both. I think it's the city helping BSU, just like that one thing that we just did, we were successful.
Yes, Jesse.
I just wanted to thank you, John, because honestly, from a, a labor perspective and a science perspective, I don't think people realize how much work and money actually had to go into figuring all of this stuff out. And this is stuff that I know that, I mean, I, I probably think about septic tanks more than most people, because the water quality issue is a thing for me. I don't think we should have septic tanks in new development as a city at all. But there's just a lot of very good framework here, and you guys spent a lot of money and you did a lot of time on it. So I think we just, a thank you to BSU for actually doing the groundwork on this is great. And I look forward to helping, you know, any opportunities that we can to get money where it should go on this. You know, we're an able and willing partner. Thank you for your work on that.
Is there a future with the bulk tank and the gray water being used in, on their own property for gray water being from your dishwasher and your black water from your toilet going into a bulk tank, which could be pumped rather than a septic tank where it gets dispersed through the, through the ground?
I think there are, there are, over the last couple of years, there've been legislation coming out of Tallahassee, one of which encourages the use of these gray water systems. For the most part, that's going to be the developer and the property owner's responsibility for implementing some of those. I mean, we would be happy to work with them. I think that's a good conservation approach from BSU's standpoint. So we would work with them on that. I don't know, because we're a largely residential community, whether some of those commercial developments that can most take advantage of these gray water systems will, will really be located here in Benita. But we'll keep on, keep an eye out for those kind of opportunities.
Thank you. Anything else? Amy, please.
Could you just expand on your comments about your rating system? And how, you know, you say you have, you go through 10% of the system every year. Do, when you do that exploration, how many in numbers or, or miles or something do you have to replace when you do that? I mean, how many people, how, how, how many different sites are there where there are issues after you go through that 10%?
Well, there's, we have a very robust GIS mapping system. And you can go into that and focus in, and we have layers that show the rating for pipe in, in various areas. So we've got all that mapped out. Our, we have staff devoted full-time to this process. We own our own equipment. We've got the TV trucks, they go around. And so as a part of our wastewater renewal and replacement program, and we're funding that to the tune of about $1 million and a half a year, we're trying to hit first the areas that we think are most in need. One of the interesting things we found, for example, in Spanish wells, was that the piping, and one of the reasons we started there is because we know we get a lot of flow coming from that community, which demonstrates there's some infiltration and inflow entering the system. It wasn't so much the pipes there as it was the manholes and the connections, and some of the cleanouts even on the customer side. So a lot of the work that went in there was for the manholes, was for the pump stations, and less so for the piping. So we're going to have to, you know, that's, that's what, we have staff who are, you know, qualified to make those assessments, and we're going to have them doing that. But if I was more sophisticated, I would have brought a little film for you to watch the camera go through the pipes and all. For my part, I, I can't make much out of it. But the guys have a very good sense of that. They know when to do it. They, they do a lot of this at times, like in the evening, when you're not seeing a lot of flow from people using their wastewater system. So it isolates the rainwater and other, you know, other water that's getting into the system. So they're, they're pretty sophisticated in their techniques.
So if I could just infer from what you're saying, that after you've done this, you're comfortable that you're identifying the most critical areas where you need to address, and then you go after it? I mean, everybody has to prioritize, because you're not going to do everything at once, just the way we do. And from what I understand from studying septic systems, which I never thought would be of interest to me, but I acquired that in my old age, we, there, do you see any critical issues that you think needs special funding that we're talking about? Because my philosoph, philosophy is, I think we should only be spending money, whether it's our money or the federal government, on things that we need, and, and not to just spend the money to spend the money. So I would like to fully understand what the needs are within our community, and those are the things that we should address. And the fact that even the number of 1% being the critical pipes would suggest that that, even if they, if they were all bad, it wouldn't be that impactful on the environment. Is that a proper inference, or is it that oversimplifying it?
Well, there's a couple of things going on here. To get back to your original point, I should have mentioned also, we have a master plan, which in part identifies age of pipes, and has a chronology of how and when we should be replacing pipe, based on age, in addition to condition. So there are other factors that go into making those kind of decisions. Second, the, with the wastewater systems, the clay pipe issue is more one of infiltration. So it's, that's not really generally understood to contribute to pollution as much as we have water entering the wastewater system, which, if you have storm events, can result in inundating pump stations and wastewater plants. And you see that in other communities from time to time around the state. So the clay pipe is not a particular issue typically from the standpoint of impacting environmental, environmental impacts. And then we, clearly, there was a lot of work done back in the day to establish that there were environmental impacts directly from the package plants and the septic tanks in the area. I know the city recently had, for example, FGCU do some testing in the Imperial River and Spring Creek. And that demonstrated there's some fecal indicator bacteria in there, but not really indicating a source. So as these sort of studies are done, if any of that tends to point to specific septic tank areas, then that would really be an impetus to focus our spending on that. But otherwise, you're right, there are, you know, we're trying to balancing our capital needs and identifying what other issues we need to be spending money on from a wastewater standpoint. And I know that the city has this BMAP, the so-called Basin Management Action Plan, that to some degree is directing you toward what needs to be done to improve water quality in these areas. And so as a function of that, if the city comes to us and says, hey, we think there's an issue here with septic tanks, then, then we'll be in a position to respond to that. But there are also a number of other contributors to those sort of contaminants that are getting into the river. And, and so that's an issue for probably the city and BSU.
Yes, Chris.
John, there was concern in Benita Bay a year or so ago about the level of phosphorus and nitrates coming into the reclaimed water through RCS. Has there been any progress made in trying to reduce the level of phosphorus and nitrates?
Well, I think what's been happening is there's a task force in Benita Bay associated with their Lakes and Wetlands Committee. There's a task force in Pelican Landing. I know we're trying to work with them. RCS is trying to work with them. We're looking at monitoring, for our part, our levels of phosphorus and nitrogen that are going into the reclaimed water. And when I think about, and I, and talk about allocating our funds, you know, other issues may be quality of reclaimed water and what we're doing at our wastewater plants. And we may get more bang for our buck as a community by focusing on certain improvements there to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus nutrients that are getting in, that, that may be getting into our local waterways as opposed to septic tank, a small number of septic tanks. You know, we also have to bring up the fact that reclaimed water should be used in, in quantities that limit it to what can be taken up in the, in the landscaping, in the vegetation, and not make its way into the stormwater systems in these communities, and then into our local waterways. So to answer your question, the short answer is yes. We're going to, we're continuing to look at that. Our board is made aware of that. We see throughout the state a focus on, on surface water quality and impacts from reclaimed water, from septic tanks, from other sources. And we're going to continue to focus on that.
John, you mentioned something about manholes. When it rains, is, is that, that water go into your system?
Yes. We, it can get in through the lid, but it can also get in through the piping. I mean, these, these are underground. They're in a very caustic environment, because they're having wastewater pass through them with the, the gases and so forth. We have 8,000 of them out there. You know, among those, they start to deteriorate over time. So yes, it's important for us to maintain those to keep infiltration and inflow from coming into the system.
When we hit Irma, then you turned off the system out on the beach, because you might have stormwater surge?
Yeah, that was more on the water side. We did, we did, that was the only part of town where we did not have water service throughout the event and afterwards. It was a little frustrating for us, because they kept handing out bottled water, and we were telling people, you, your water's fine. Out on the coast, we did that, because we were concerned the storm surge might damage our water and wastewater piping. And if we continue to have water service out there, it would just contribute to what might be a big mess.
Salt water would really eat up your system.
Yeah, just a variety of issues. So fortunately, that didn't happen. The storm jogged over, and, and we were able to resume service out there within the next 48 hours.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, Fred.
John, I, I would imagine, but that's why I want to ask you, that, what was it, 27,000 feet roughway of vitrified clay pipe, does that include all the runouts from the house or the building to your system? Because if it doesn't, that is just, I mean, a bunch of that is just as bad as a main line. So we, we need to look at, we're asking for money to take care of this stuff, to include those runouts. And other cities are getting it, so we should be able to, too.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that.
That, that, but my question was, that's not included in the 27,000 feet, I think?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, usually, our numbers deal with the piping. We, it may be in part, and I say that because usually the utility's responsibility ends at the property line. So what our staff may be measuring is how much is running up and down the streets, how much is teeing off that up to the property line. But there may be additional piping between the property line and the home that would, ought to be addressed as well. Yeah.
Thank you. You guys are doing a great job, by the way.
Well, you said that, and I appreciate the compliment, but it's the other 135 people that are doing the great job. I just get out here and talk to you people.
Yeah, but you're the general.
Appreciate their work.
I would say before, I would say before we had central water, that you couldn't, the water was, sulfur water smells so bad. Then we put in potable water, and now everybody moved into Benita. So anyways, unexpected consequences. Well, thank you, John. Anything else?
We want to thank John, because we, the city did receive a preliminary notice of funding on some of the applications we have provided, grant applications that Ellie provided for our partnership. There's more information to come, and we will be working with John's staff to put together some proposals and probably some potential requests for matching if we, as we move forward to see the feasibility. But DEP has done a preliminary notice that we are eligible for our, our next steps.
Very good, very good. Thank you, John. Anything else?
And Ellie.
Thank you.
Ten A. I call it the Dixie Moon, good bread and grocery.
Acaboos.
What are we going to do with that? I found out there's no bathroom in there, so we can't really have a business in there. And they demonstrate, the pictures that are shown here show tables and chairs on somebody else's property. We can use it for storage. We can put some trees and then a little shade and some picnic tables out front for people to sit on. Keep it painted up, looking good. But unless you, unless you put half a million dollars into that old building, you can't use it without a bathroom, I've been told. Is that right? Mike, you're in that area?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's very conducive for running a business out of, without a bathroom, or there's currently no running water in there. I mean, you know, my, my, I know we're waiting for Historic Preservation Board to come up with something for it. But I mean, like, my vision was to kind of use it like a shadow box. You know, have people be able to look in the windows, see what the old store looked like up front. Possibly add windows on the back, have other rooms set up at, you know, vintage period, like the hotel room, things like that.
We could run electricity in there?
Yeah, yeah.
You don't have electricity in there. Put a dehumidifier.
They're currently, it's not, but they're, it's, it's basically a, a building shell, but there would be a possibility of electricity. It becomes more complicated as water to sink. You, you have the cottages currently, that, the artist cottages, they do have a utility sink in there, but they don't have restrooms. They get a security check to be able to use the restrooms at the Lyles. But it's, it, there's a possibility for electric. It would be more complicated to get into a restroom facility there.
And the roof's not leaking, and the floor's all right. I haven't been in it, I...
We can arrange a tour for you if you'd like, but it, no, it's not leaking, and, you know, it's...
It looks nice, you know?
It's just a shell. It's, you know, you got framing in there, there's no walls.
Somebody said, what have you done your first year as a mayor? I said, well, I got the Dixie Moon painted. It's, it's the center of town, and it looks nice, it looks better. But it's too small for a restaurant, is my opinion. I don't think it's worth a half a million dollars to, to do that.
You do have funding in your capital improvement project, line item, to do some renovations. And I think, Mayor, what you discussed is getting some direction from council on what you'd like to see those renovations look like. And that sort of kind of pens the use of, of how, how we move forward with that. Also revisiting that vision from San Vincent, if that's of interest to council, or if you want us to rework that, or bring back some prices. That was sort of the discussion of, of request of information from staff. So we would need some direction before we reutilize any of that CIP. We want some direction from the council.
Can we have some input from, from the council?
I think it's very difficult to give direction, and that's why nothing has been done, because it's, it hasn't fulfilled its promise from when it was moved there. So I vacillate between saying we should just take it down, which was, you know, a horrible thing to say, because this is, quote, "a historic building." It may or may not be a historic building, because we've moved it, so it's not a historic building anymore. I think that it might be useful to explore using the facade and incorporate it into something else, perhaps when we do the bamboo thing, the bamboo property. Maybe that could be, you know, like we do a mural, we would use just the facade or something. Or we could just open it up entirely on three sides. If we could get it freestanding and put some kind of historical record on the inside, so people could go in there. We maybe could do a bench, if we want the structure there, which is still a question in my mind. Because I like San Vincent's proposal, but as the mayor said, it's on property that doesn't belong to the, to the city. Because I like Sam Vincent's proposal, but as the mayor said, it's on property that doesn't belong to the city. I think what we do on the outside is easy compared to what we have to do with the building itself. And I think we have some hard decisions to make. I don't think it's feasible, from what I understand, to make it usable in a sense where people could use it as a fully constructed building. So, I think we really have to, I mean, if somebody comes up with a brilliant idea, but I don't think it's possible because we have so many constructs there. And I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to spend half a million dollars for something that's not functional. If it could be made into an artist cottage somehow, which would have, it'd still need water there. I don't really see that that's possible, but maybe it is. We need engineers in here. We don't need planners because we could dream what we want. But I just think it, we made a mistake there and we have to admit it. So now we have to go forward and say, "What are we going to make the best of it?" Try to save the facade if you want to save it, even as just a billboard type of thing.
Okay, Laura?
Well, again, Amy articulates my thoughts very well. But I just vote to table this and see where the Baron Collier project goes and then how best we can make good with the facade. Because there's nothing more than the facade. I like Mike's idea of maybe doing, touch some type of in, map that would provide, you know, you're here and if you want to go to here, but we need to wait to see what is going to be there. So, table and don't spend any more money and make it look, you've made it look very nice. The painting and the landscaping has improved. But I would not spend any more money on this project right now.
Chris, do you have any comment?
No, I wouldn't spend any more money on the project right now. I guess my, my deeper thoughts say, you know, if we took it down, would anybody miss it in six months? I don't know. But let's not go there yet. I would rather spend money on the old building, old restaurant building just north of the Everglades Wonder Garden, which I think looks terrible. And...
That's not ours.
That's what?
It's not ours to do, but go ahead.
No, it's not ours? I thought it was. Okay, well...
Okay, my comment is I'd like to put a couple shade trees and benches, maybe picnic table. Some people that walk can have a place to sit down. And Mike's idea is we can get it open with a dehumidifier and electricity and maybe put some trinkets in it or some flyers or something. But I'd just like to get a little, the tree advisory board has a little money. They could come up with a native tree, a trophy tree that would accent that, the old 41 corridor temporarily. Fred, you have any comments?
Yeah, first of all, we've got more needs right now than we got money. And I agree with, we want to put money, big money on that thing. Because once you start, it's going to cost a lot of money to make it really look like something. Most people would tell you, the only way it's ever going to look good is if you rebuild that front porch with the columns like it had in the pictures and all that. Because they don't even look like the pictures. I think putting a dehumidifier is a good idea, and all you have to do is run the condensate hose out into the grass so water runs out there. It's not, you're not going to be putting thousands of gallons of water out there. So, I think that's a good idea. And then see what develops with the rest thing. There is, I think everybody knows, that the building, the laundromat that's closed, isn't there going to be a kind of a bakery?
That's a possibility.
If that would come to pass, then that would mean some of, putting tables and all that out there would be good because people could get something in the bake shop, coffee, and then go out there and eat some of the stuff with the, enjoy the sun and the sights. But I don't think we should spend big money on it right now.
Okay, Jesse, you got it. Your district?
I would just say that, you know, I think we kind of sit still for a minute and see how downtown goes. Because I don't want, I would like to hear from Charlie or whoever at the Historic Society. If what Amy said is true, that it no longer has historical significance, then, you know, my feelings may be a little different on the path forward. If it is still historic, I don't want to take it down in haste, but I don't want to spend any more money until we have a plan for what we're actually going to do with it.
Okay, well, since it's been moved, that makes it less historical.
Yeah, I'm more...
We've been looking for grants and that's been...
I can clarify, Mayor and Council. So, the actual structure is on the City of Benita Springs Local Designation of Historic Structures, where the challenge that the city had, we were applying for the Florida, the Department of State Historical Preservation Grants previously, many times, and Ellie is a champion at these grants. And what our challenges were is that we had relocated the building.
And we can't get money for it?
So, what we did is staff recommended that if you wanted to move forward with any plans, when we were planning budget, is that you actually budget that into your capital improvement because we weren't moving for, we had applied, I think, a couple years, maybe three years, two or three years in a row. And unfortunately, we weren't able to procure any funds that way. So, when we came back during budget time, we suggested that you start budgeting for a plan, if that's what you wanted to do, because the funds were not coming from grants. But it is on the city's register of, local register.
But it's not state or national?
No, it's not. The only national one you have is the Benita Springs Elementary School. The only other two properties that potentially could be eligible for national is the Wonder Gardens and Shangri-La.
Could you, okay, I don't know if you all are open to, well, maybe we hold on it, but maybe if you guys think it's appropriate, maybe somebody on staff, come, give us some option, you know, give us three options of what we could potentially do there.
If you may, what we might want to do, as I know the suggestion was made, is maybe we could, in our next talks with Baron Collier, point out the structure to them. And so, just so that they're aware of it and see if they have any thoughts. And then the other thing is, an interim, we may be able to look at the landscaping around the building, if that's a concern, as far as some beautification on the property there while some decisions are made.
Just to add, I think I'm correct. That sculpture is being moved, right, Matt? Isn't that going to one of your pocket parts?
I think there was a suggestion.
Yeah, I think that, I think the Art in Public Places, you could check into, oh, there's, Nicole knows all. Okay. So, if we may, if that is indeed true, we would have more room there, is all I'm saying.
Correct. The Art in Public Places Board has had discussions, now that the Dixie Moon or Good Bread Grocery is there, that away, the sculpture in front, would be moved to a new location just because it's not the original intent of the artist. It was supposed to be in an open area, and now that the area behind it is blocking it, the board would recommend that it be moved. And they are looking at different locations. One location would be along West Harry Street by one of the new bench rest areas.
Very good.
Do you have any idea of the cost?
To move the, away? We don't have a cost yet because we are still...
Relocating, not just moving and then putting.
Yeah, the installation, it's already on, if we did move it to West Harry Street, it would be placed on a pad that's already there. So, it would be, just be the moving of the sculpture. I don't have an exact cost yet, but I can come back with...
Get a mob with a rope and pull it down. Think you've got in other cities? Okay. Okay, thank you. I think we've got direction here.
We will have, in our next discussion, we'll bring up the structure to Baron Collier, and then we'll take a look at some landscaping options that might be to help some hardscape landscaping.
Could I just follow? Are we also moving the Secret Bench? Would that all be at one time? Because you're in the...
Yeah, yeah, it's supposed to be moved, but I don't know, Matt is in charge.
I mostly stay away from the art stuff, quite honestly. But yes, it is supposed to be being moved. We can have Nicole probably speak about that. You don't want me involved in the art.
Secret Bench is going to be moved from City Hall back down to its original location downtown now that those improvements are complete. We actually have purchased a sculpture that goes in place here at City Hall, where the Secret Bench is, which you have approved before the renovations of the facility. So, we do have some moving around of sculptures and placement of a new sculpture here at City Hall.
Hopefully, we coordinate it so it's cheaper.
Yes, yes, it would make it easier.
And just to clarify, Nicole, the Secret Bench, its location is really by the Banyan Tree.
Yep, yes. Yep, that was the original location, and we're just moving it back to that.
Do we have a timeline on any of this stuff?
We are working on that. We do have Family, a new sculpture that you approved at your last meeting, coming to be delivered as well. So, we are doing quite a few projects in Art in Public Places right now. So, hopefully, we can get all of those completed in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Volunteer group, this guy, he already spoke, I believe.
Well, he spoke at public comment, but the green sheet's mine. Tim Dempsey's on our Bicycle-Cadestrian Committee, and he's an avid hiker and mountain biker. And he has a lot of interest in the trails, especially at Nature Place and Colomms Trail. And just wanted to augment what the city's already doing by forming a small committee to go out there and keep the trail clean and keep up with the maintenance. The city does have StanTech come out there twice a year, but it really needs, you know, some in-between pruning and cleaning up. So, Mr. Dempsey would just like to help out that way. So, just hoping I could get some support and so he can form his little...
Fabulous.
It sounds wonderful. Are, is there any liability problem we have?
No, and we have a, just like the Citywide Cleanup Day, we have a volunteer form that they sign, and there's no issue with that. We just asked that, and Mr. Dempsey agreed, to just coordinate with Nicole's staff so we know they're out there and when they're doing, so that we're not in conflict with StanTech. And also, they were going to evaluate the work that StanTech did so they could make their own follow-up plans.
Well, it's, I just offer my very sincere thank you for him for offering that. And it's interesting to hear he's from Vermont, so I have to talk to him.
Volunteer, that's a friendly word, yes. Okay, now we get into sticky, wicked Coconut Road in Astero.
Okay.
Who brought this up?
Amy. This is my green sheet because, as you see from, I think we have a letter here, oh, on the back up here. This letter was advanced to us right after, or sort of at the same time of our last meeting. And in the past, I had engaged, been engaged in a conversation with Astero and Lee County as the council had instructed me to do. So, we, after speaking with Arlene, we thought we should bring it forward to the council again to see if you still want me to do that, because I think we're trying to set up another meeting. And to just give the council an opportunity to voice their thoughts on this because they're talking about Coconut Road. And as you know from our last meeting when we were working on Bayview, many, many, many people talked about traffic along that road. And it's just continuing the conversation. If there's any, my position has always been that I'll listen and come back, and if there's anything that sounds interesting, I'll bring it back to the council. Because I don't, I don't feel that I could speak for the council without having a specific discussion on anything specific that comes in there. But again, in the interest of being cooperative and understanding what may be of interest to the city going forward, I think we should continue those conversations. And it's, it works out a lot better in a, in a conference kind of environment.
Okay, thank you, Amy. My opinion is that they haven't done any construction at Bayview or Rappore. The road is not failing currently. That we have time to have Astero and Lee County come to the table since Astero Road. When it goes through the development, because John, does that, you said something about when they come up for a development order, that they're going to have to look at that road and stuff?
That is correct, and the development order has been filed.
What is correct?
That when the development order is submitted, it gets distributed to both Lee County and to the Village of Astero for their review and comment.
And it's their roads and their...
Correct.
And is it, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Is it common that cities do joint ventures together with roads? Because, you know, we do have our, our own paradise, Angles Paradise Road that we're purchasing, if they want to join in.
There's always unique characteristics whenever cities are this close together. That's usually why the legislature likes them to be two miles apart. However, in this particular case, because it's not, we have a situation that we're facing today. So, it's relatively unique. I wouldn't say that it's unheard of, but it's not common.
And you think it's a year or two down the road?
For construction?
Yeah, before the development order or whatever.
Based on, on their progress with submittals and with what they've told us before, I think it's around the 18-month period, so right in the middle of what you're discussing.
Council? I'm, I have like a broader view. I'm not focusing particularly on that development down there. I'm focusing more on the whole Coconut Road from the bay to 41. And at my last conversation with them, when they brought out their traffic study, I kept saying, "Well, where is your analysis of the intersection of 41 and Coconut Road?" Because I dreamed of another quadrant, you know, issue, maybe 10 years in the future. And there's a lot of development that is going in there. So, I think that's why it might be useful to have these kinds of conversations, not to offer any specific ideas about what we in Benita would like in that road because it's not, it's true, it's not our road. And, and I think that that kind of conversation would be useful and would be the focus of my personal view. But it's, you know, it's what everybody else is talking about. I don't focus too much on the, on the development because as John said, they're going to have to talk about it. And so is Pelican Landing, who is, also has a development project down there. So, they are well aware in conversations that it's going to have to be everybody together trying to figure out how they could work cooperatively.
And isn't Astero developing the corner?
Yes.
With the health park, so?
Yes.
Yes, Lee Health owns the northwest corner and...
And I assure you, I'm not going to go there alone. So, I'm going to have Matt, I think the last time Matt, did Arlene come to? Matt and Arlene will be there.
Yes, it's too much responsibility for one person.
Well, I'm not going to, I don't...
You can't speak for all seven of them.
I don't speak for everybody, and I don't agree to anything. That's my position.
Okay, very good. Chris, you have something to say on that?
Well, I, I think it's, it's, I always tend to think about what's, what's that road's going to look like 10 years from now. We all know that road's going to look different 10 years from now. And I think we need to start a meeting with Lee County and Astero and work out what that plan's going to be. There's, we have Benita Bay, we have Benita Springs residents that are in Pelican Landing and will be in the London Bay community. And, you know, I don't know that waiting until the construction actually starts is going to gain us anything. So, I would encourage us to get at the table and get our views across as to what that road should look like. You know, I would, if it was me, I would have, I would have a view as to what it would look like. Not just go up and have a conversation. But if you don't want to have a view at this point, then that's up to council. But I don't see any reason not to have a view, so.
I think in order to have a view, we would have to have some analysis.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's the issue.
We've got the capability of getting that analysis, so why not go ahead and get it?
Well, we'd have to come to, we'd have to ask the city to pay for it. So, I think personally, I mean, we could, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? So, I think maybe if we just go talk and if it, it seems like we should come back to the council and ask for some analysis which incorporates all that. I'm not against it because that was the first thing I said, but...
You hear something, Fred?
Yeah, I, I think the Village of Astero, who seems to be the most vocal on it, but it could be others. We could even be involved in it. I think it's critically important... I think it's critically important that this season, in just before the season end, in the high season, a good traffic count be made of what's there now. Because once you know what's there now, you can come up with pretty good estimates of what the Weeks Fish Camp converted to Bayview is going to do and what the development that's going to go on inside Pelican Landing is going to do. And then the other thing, but you need to start with good data. And typically, a lot of the developers, when they measure stuff, they measure it in the summer and they use a multiplier which is way, way off on the low side. So I think that's the starting point. In fact, if I could have got through on my phone time with you guys, that was what I talked to Derek about, and he said there was, that was what they were working to, I think he said. Is that right, Derek?
There had been conversations at staff level about having, getting traffic counts during the development order process.
If anything, my view is you need that first, because that gives a good, sound platform for any future analysis. And then the next time, and then when the development is pretty well done, you can do another one to see how your estimates come up to what you thought they would be versus reality. But right now, we don't have a good, good traffic count on that road in the high season. At least, that's what I'm being told by staff, anyway.
Fred, didn't we have a study that said it was failing and now we have a study that said it's not failing?
Never.
My understanding is it's not failing. But that traffic study...
The original development was made it failing or something, I don't know.
The traffic study that I'm...
Astero wanted that road, Lee County wanted that road, the city didn't want that road, and we let them have that road. And I think it's their problem, even though we use it. Of course, they use Hickory Boulevard too, and that's a Lee County road. They use Benita Beach Road, that's a Lee County road, and we all contribute to that. We'll have to keep working on it. I think we're not going to decide today.
No, no, but I think the starting point is that we take a position, we want that traffic study done of the road.
John's going to have some traffic studies, right?
Yes, that's part of the supplemental process.
It'll be in the, they're going to have...
And Astero and Benita will split the cost?
No, it's turned in as part of the application. So this study that we're looking at, in terms of this particular project, is submitted to the city and it's prepared by the applicant. If there's an additional study, I think that Councilman Forbes was discussing, where we would go out there and study what we wanted to do, then that we would have to determine who's paying for that.
No, I'm not necessarily advocating that we do it. I just said it needs to happen and it needs to happen this high season. Because if you don't do it then, in order to get good numbers, you got to wait one year from this. I think you need it now.
And just so the council knows, when we require traffic impact statements, how far out a study extends is based upon how far a percentage of the impact of that overall intersection or overall segment extends. So if the impact only extends one or two intersections, that's as far as the study needs to go. If it shows that the impact extends further, whatever further is, that's the extent of the study. So there, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding. When we're looking at a traffic study that comes in for this particular application, it may reach US 41, it may not. I don't want to provide any false hope on that. So if we're looking to study every intersection and what those, what those numbers are, I wouldn't anticipate that that being the scope of what's turned in to us.
41 is a state road or is it a Lee County road?
Yes.
A state road.
It's, well, I think it's a state road maintained by the county.
I think that's where we've got to focus on our intersection, right?
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reiterate your point that it's Astero and Lee County Road.
Well, that, 41 I'm talking about.
I know, but Coconut...
41 is a state road.
Yes.
Yes. Been corrected, thankfully.
But we, as a council, have to decide if whoever does the traffic study and whatever method they do, whether it's in our interest to have some sort of a study that extends beyond the development. My personal feeling at this time, without talking to all the experts, is that if there is a traffic study, it should include all the Benita Springs residents, which would mean you start at the development, you go through the Colony, Pelican Landing, Spring Creek is, belongs to, is in Benita Springs. So those are residents that need to be addressed. And also, we have the Hyatt that we're, I think we owe something to be certain that they can get to that business. It's one of the, you know, the premier hotels in Benita Springs. So I think that intersection personally is very important. And I go there a lot, so I know that there's a lot of traffic coming west along Coconut Road. And there is also proposed development coming at Three Oaks that's also in Astero. So there's a lot of impact along Coconut Road that it would be nice if we could look at it in total. That's my opinion. But it's, you know, we haven't talked about it, the staff hasn't either encouraged or discouraged that kind of thinking. But this is, this is why I'd like to go and listen to see what they're talking about. If they're focusing solely on Bayview, I wouldn't be that interested, you know? That's my personal feeling.
Chris, do you, MPO, do you go to the MPO? Who's represented the MPO?
Fred.
Fred?
And myself.
Has there been a word, has there been a single word about Coconut as a MPO? Because they're like 30 years out and they haven't even started anything? Not a word?
The answer is no. There's not been any discussion. But that kind of situation is more rare than there would be, because they deal with main arteries like 41, Benita Beach Road, big roads that go someplace. This is a small road to go someplace, but it's got a lot of traffic and a lot of potential motor.
It's an intersection. I'm working on that intersection. We've got to have motor in lanes or something. Is that right? I'm not that familiar with it, but we...
I'm not a traffic planner, but I was...
Hey, can you, you guys bring it up at the next MPO meeting?
I can talk to Don Scott about it and get...
See if we can get some information.
I think the key thing, I think the key thing for us, but Astero and the county would be wanting more. If we get how much traffic comes out on 41 and how much goes to the south, which is towards Benita, and how much goes north, that's probably our main thing that we're interested in, because that tells us what percentage of the total traffic going through Beach Road and 41 comes out of that road. Now, for Astero, they ought to put a counting device at the Hyatt, every one of the main things that contributes to traffic on that road. Because they're, they're going to be in the detail of trying to figure out what they need to do at different... But from our point of view, we need to total and we need to know how much goes north and how much goes south. South means it's going through 41 and Beach Road, and that contributes to our problem, which we got to fix.
And I hate to like add on, but then what about...
Can we all get a discussion point? Yeah. In this here, at some point?
Jesse, you have anything to say on this?
Yes, I do, actually. Did any of you watch the Astero City Council meeting last week? Okay. If you guys want to go back and watch that, it's abundantly clear what they think. This is, this is a problem that we're causing that we should pay for, okay? That's, that to me is problematic and that to me says, you know, having a meeting immediately, I think is prematurely. Because as some of you alluded to, you know, we need to holistically understand Coconut Road and everything that's coming as far as development on Coconut Road. If they have a hospital and a commercial plaza coming in there, and they already have a shopping mall and they already have residences on it, and then they're going to tell us they want us to pay for $2 million of a study when we're having nothing even comparable as far as impact goes, that to me is a problem. Furthermore, it's a problem because it's not failing yet. You're 15 years away. So because it's a number one priority for the city of Astero, does that mean it's a number one priority for the city of Benita Springs? We have 60,000 residents. You all take part in the budget process. During that process, we chronologically fund the projects that we think are most important. If you look at our city, Coconut Road is not one of the largest issues we have.
Amen.
Furthermore, I think setting the precedent that every time we do something on the border with Astero, suddenly, we're going to be discussing how we're going to spend our money is ludicrous, because impact fees by nature are not project-specific. So if we decide we need to spend that money elsewhere, that's where we're going to spend it. So this idea that you need to meet with us to discuss how you're, where you're going to spend your money, that is, that's, you don't come to our house and tell us how we're going to spend our funds. I understand you're concerned about Coconut Road. I hear you, but once again, it's a number one for you, that doesn't make it a number one for us. 60,000 people, way more roads, way more projects, and a lot more going on. And we go through a painstaking process with ourselves and with staff, deciding what's going to be, what's going to be funded, when it's going to be funded. So I don't like the idea of anybody forcing our hand in regards to timetables or projects or anything along those lines. And I think having a meeting, when I watch their meeting and I know exactly what they're thinking, is, it's silly of us to walk into a meeting like that and not know exactly what else is coming up on Coconut Road. What does that look like as far as traffic goes? What does that look like as far as what they're getting in impact fees? They're over here looking at our plate, what does their plate look like? So I don't think a meeting is appropriate until we have all of our ducks in a row, and then we can say, "All right, you want to talk, we can talk." And even then, even then, an interlocal would probably not be what they would have in mind, because quite frankly, it's their road, and if we're going to pay a portion of it, it's going to be a way smaller portion than they think they're entitled to. So with that being said, I'd like staff to look into everything going on in that road as far as future development goes. And I'd like to understand exactly what we're looking at and what potential traffic studies we might want to do before we actually even get into a discussion about this. Because I think having the discussion right now on the heels of this, since they wrote it as soon as we filed it, is that it's now setting the precedent that this, these dollars for this project on this road at this time, because we say.
I agree with you, Jesse. We have a intersection...
Just ditto.
In between words? We have an intersection of Benita Beach Road and 41.
Exactly.
Which we just put $3 million into buying a piece of property so we could build a road to help with the traffic flow.
And everybody goes to the beach.
And who knows how many millions of dollars more that's going to cost us? And it's going to benefit the people in Coconut, everybody all over town. So I agree with you, let them work on it, it's their roads for a while.
And I'm not saying we don't talk to them, but I'm just saying we need to understand every portion of it. Because they're trying to pick, they're trying to pinpoint one project and then say, "This is going to fail now because of you." When if you look at Coconut Road and who has what, that's not the case. That's not the case. So they're not going to force our hand and they're not going to force our timetable, because it's important to them. Again, we, do what we do, pay for your roads. Do a, do a CIP and budget and time it and do it when it's appropriate, just like we do. So our dollars are ours and, you know, talk to us, let us know when it's appropriate. But it's not going to be for another 10 years for us as far as interlocal goes, so that's, that's all I've got.
Well, let me make one comment.
Yep.
You know, I never got too far in life with fighting with my neighbors, okay? And so when Cogier County decides to run those four lanes up from 41 up to Old 41, I just, I just want you to think about whether or not you'd like to have a seat at that table and talk about it.
Well, we've been fighting that. And they want to go north in Astero too. That's why the DRGR deal was such a big deal, because they're trying to blow directly through. We have, we, our autonomy is all we have. So it can't be infringed upon, it can't be, you can't force our hand and push things around with our dollars and our people. It's, that's what we're here for.
I agree with a lot of what Jesse said, but I don't, I don't agree with the idea that we shouldn't be talking to our neighbors. I think that's what staff does, and I mean, if...
Maybe let staff do it.
I would want to talk to them, I just want to understand what it looks like first.
Well, Jesse, some of the suggestions you have, you know, we'd have to have a discussion about because it's, they're not practical at this time.
Like what?
Like having this entire study that you want the staff to do, we'd have to hire somebody to do that, I mean...
No, I can tell you right now, there's a hospital, a commercial section that they aren't accounting for.
Jesse, excuse me, that's not what you said. You know, to get the traffic study, I think I would like to have a professional person do that at some point, and I'm not against that. But I, the point that we're trying to decide is whether you want to have a meeting with our neighbors and discuss it. And it's clear your position, and I, in many ways, agree with what you're saying. But I don't agree that we shouldn't be talking to our neighbors. Just what Chris said, I think that's a mistake. And if we don't want to do it, it's fine. You know, I don't, I have better things to do with my time. But I fully understand what you're saying.
And I think you misunderstand me a little bit. I'm not saying don't speak to our neighbors.
Well...
I have no problem having a meeting with our neighbors after we can say, "Okay, with your future planned development on this road, here's what the impacts are going to be." So that way, that way, we're at least walking into a fair fight. They know what they're going to hit us with, what are we hitting back with? We don't know what those impacts or those costs are.
It's not going to be a fight, Jesse.
It is.
Excuse me. I was in the subsequent, the meeting before, and it's not going to be a fight.
Watch their last council meeting.
I don't care what they say in their council meeting. You know, I talked, we have Astero councilman, woman, living in our community. And I've had this discussion several times already with it, just what you're talking about. They have, you know, they have a certain perspective and it's not ours. And I agree that they can't tell us how we should run our city. I agree about the impact fees, and they've been told that many times. This is the, this is the problem. We have a bunch of E-rated roads all over Benita Springs. And when we decide what we want to do on them, we prioritize them. Lee County has a bunch, bunch of E-rated roads all over the county, and they have to prioritize when they do. And Astero has the same thing, all right? So just because this road has come up, and I don't, frankly, I don't even see why it's a priority for Astero, but I don't tell them to start focusing on some of their other E-things, E-rated roads. But I do think it would be a good idea to have a conversation so that what happened in the meeting the other day will be damped down, because it doesn't help to have that kind of conversation happening in other councils. We can't prevent them from having it, but maybe we could turn their minds a little bit.
May I suggest that John and Don, when they come forward to bring it back to us, and we wait till Bayview does something before we get our nose out of joint here.
We like me to present the development order application when it comes in, because...
Yeah, let us know what they're doing, what Bayview's doing.
Okay.
All right, can we end this conversation for now?
It doesn't, may I just point out, it doesn't answer Amy, does she spend...
The question is, do you want to have a meeting or not? And do you want to talk to...
Not until John comes up with it.
Well, let's have a vote on it. Does anybody, anyone who wants to have the meeting, I'm in favor of having a meeting. And if everybody says no, it's fine with me.
I'm in favor.
Can I make a motion to make it? No.
I ask clarification. If you have the meeting, are you going to bring up the traffic study and getting it done by this high season? If we're not going to give them that thought, I don't see a lot of value to me. I think getting that resolved is important.
I'd like to talk to staff about that, about the impact.
Mr. Mayor and Council?
Yes, sir.
I almost don't want to weigh in, because I'm getting a whole lot of Imperial Crossing vibes, where I think you're mostly on the same page. I think, I think there's a lot of consensus that there needs to be some kind of study. The question is whether that is an independent study, whether it's a study by the village who's asking, whether it's a study jointly funded, whether it's by the city, or whether it's through the development order process. I think the question, if there is a meeting, should just be that there's a preference for a study. And, you know, the details can be worked out later on.
Who's paying for the study?
Well, for all we, for all we know, Astero is doing a study or is paying for a study. We don't know these questions. The problem is that we're looking, we're doing snapshots of watching our meeting, watching their meeting, watching our meeting, watching their meeting. And that's very difficult, and so...
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Just trying to answer Amy's question of whether we can, should have a meeting or not.
No. Arlene, can you, you have direction here to see where the studies are and, you know, we can't get anywhere today with this, I can see that.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, point of order.
There's a...
Yes.
I have asked, I put a motion on the floor to have the meeting, and I just asked to, if somebody will second that, we'll vote on it.
I'll second it.
All right.
Because you go with Matt and Arlene.
Correct.
Amy has pointed out, she just is a liaison, she's going... Amy has pointed out, she just is a liaison, she's gonna listen. She's not gonna make any commitments or any statements.
And bring all of our concerns that we collectively have as a board to.
Exactly, to them.
I'll put them in writing, but I've, I've stated most of them.
Exactly, fine. So if you don't, if you wanna vote no, it's fine, and if you wanna vote yes, fine. And you can put all your, all your particulars in there, and we'll talk about it.
I, I wanna clarify one thing. Getting traffic count is not a traffic study, and it's fairly cheap compared to a traffic study. If you don't have the traffic count now, by this spring and the high season, to get a goods count, you're gonna have to wait a year. That's what I'm enter, I'm not interested in the study necessarily, have nothing against it, but the thing we gotta get is that data.
Or table it.
Hey, Mike, Mike, you got the floor.
Well, I, I haven't spoken yet, so, um, I, I think we should talk, um, but everything should be brought to the table. I wholeheartedly agree with Fred that we need traffic counts. And as far as the study goes, I would like to wait until, um, our, um, community development looks at the DO and to see if it, you know, where their study's gonna go. Because if their study's gonna go all the way to the intersection, then we don't need another one, cause they're gonna do it. If it falls short of that, then maybe we need to do a study. But I, I don't wanna say spend the money now on a study that we don't need to do.
And just so everybody knows, it has been submitted, so we do have a copy of it. I just have not looked at it yet, because it's only been a couple of days, so. I don't know how far it goes.
That does not include a count.
It's not a count, it's the, it's the traffic impact statement with their development order.
But, but I think we should have a count, like Fred said.
No, from London Bay.
Okay. I've read that.
So we got a motion and a second on the floor. I'll call the question.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Well, wait, if you're gonna go parolmentary, you gotta have a second, and we gotta do a roll call.
There was a second.
On calling the question.
No, but, but we're gonna vote.
Okay, okay. I'll withdraw.
To clarify, the motion is to have the meeting.
No, what, 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 what Councilman Forbes is saying is there has to be a, a second on the call of the question.
But.
If, if you guys don't wanna go through all the formality and just wanna vote on the primary motion.
He just withdrew, he just withdrew.
So we're voting.
Uh, you, uh, Attorney, would you state what we're voting on?
You're voting on whether or not Councilman Corumba is gonna have a meeting with, I believe it's Mayor Arrington at the Village of Estero, to, to hear from them and to raise the concerns raised by the council today.
And that's been seconded.
It has been by, by me.
Okay, let's, uh, take a vote.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilmember Cory?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Corumba?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
No.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. There will be a meeting, and you're gonna listen and not talk?
Well, I.
I can't believe that.
That's not what she said.
I, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I just would ask everybody, is it possible for them to get a list of their, I mean, I, a list of what they said and anything else to Arlene, so that when we, I have a meeting with Arlene and Matt and whoever comes from Estero, and maybe Derek will be there, that we will be sure to reflect your views accurately? That's what I wanna do.
Can we, can we record that meeting? We can have a little recording.
Well, we can have notes, I don't know, do they?
Yeah, yeah, recording of it.
Typically, we.
Typically, no.
I, I would, I would have the meeting, let the meeting happen. That meeting is the beginning of a process.
Yes.
That's gonna have multiple follow-up meetings, more discussions, discussions about counts, discussions about cost, discussions about what the project is.
Mm-hmm.
Formalizing this too much at this point.
And when was this meeting? When was this meeting gonna happen?
We don't have a date.
Don't have a date.
To be announced.
We said no for the last proposal.
Okay, well.
This isn't Yalta, it's not a huge, you know, it's not.
I propose twenty, twenty twenty-five.
It will not be happening next year.
Someday, someday in the next fifteen years.
There's four of us, you should be able to get a good and accurate, talk to four of us, you know. Well, you can't talk to me, but you can talk to the other three.
Okay, can we move on to a city attorney's report? This is a good thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so this is, uh, just an update. This is now the third year of my, uh, contract with the, um, with the city. It is an Atwell contract, but at the time that, for the, for the councilmembers who have joined us since then, at the time that the city did its RFQ to determine whether it would go to outside legal counsel, uh, there was a committee set up of, of local lawyers who reviewed the proposals, reviewed the budget of the then-in-house city attorney. Uh, the Ray Robinson proposal came to the, to the top of that. Um, at that time, uh, we were proposing a retainer of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. There was, which was a, considered a savings, fifty thousand dollars a year. The city council in negotiations asked for additional savings, uh, which was provided by retaining, uh, the staff attorney, uh, which brought that down to three hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, but there was continued discussions about the kind of give and take that occurs with legal services and with, which is typically billed on an hourly basis, and needs the government to try and have some certainty and budgeting. And so what was proposed was a, uh, retainer that's billed every month. And then at the end of that, uh, if there is savings, in other words, if I, if you do not overutilize my services and I can, and I can keep the, the, the billing lower than the target, I remit back to the city seventy percent of those savings. I, I retain the rest, that actually increases my effective hourly rate. Um, and I'm happy to report that for the third year, we have saved additional money. So, um, another fifty thousand dollars will be coming back to the city, um, probably in the next couple of days. And that ultimately means that the savings that the city has gained is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, uh, year over year. So I just wanted to give you that good news, and, um.
We don't need to vote on that.
No, you know.
As Lisa's back there smiling.
And I am not proposing any changes or anything, uh, uh, so I just wanted to let you, let you know.
Thank you, we get along well, we're getting along well, thank you.
I do have a question about outside counsel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do, have, have you found that we need them about the same as we have, or, or?
Well, if, if you look at the, cause I know the question came up previously during budgeting, we have a lot more set aside for outside coun- counsel. Um, that's based on prior expenditures, those estimates. The actual expenditures that have been, uh, conducted through, um, whether it's David or o- other attorneys, have been substantially below that. And that's because we had several years of high litigation.
Mm-hmm.
Those, that litigation is, is really tailing off.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is still value in my mind of having outside counsel. And, and the reason for that is not that I cannot advise you on, on big projects. The issue is that in, in instances where staff feels that they need to, to have additional legal resources, I cannot sit in a position legally to advise staff when they're advocating for a position, say a denial of a project, and advise you as the fact determiner and the policymaker in the same role. That's, that's as if the prosecutor gets up and decides to go sit with the judge and give the judge advice. And so there are, there are instances where we need to have that separation, and so I, I think that that value is still there. And, and, and generally, those costs are, are recovered through our cost recovery ordinance by applicants when they submit. So I generally only review, like, your land use issues for, for general compliance and procedural issues. Uh, it's David and his team that get into the details on specific applications.
Thank you. One thing I'd just like to add to that is, in talking with John and Mike and Jackie, some of them are more challenging and more difficult, rare pieces are now coming to fruition because of the robust, um, developments that we have going on. So having that expertise is, is also a help to their staff as well. Thank you.
Do we need a break, or should we push on through?
Push on through.
Huh?
We're basically done, let's push on through.
Yeah.
Okay, here we are, the, uh, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. Um, we did pull, um, item F from the consent agenda, because I needed to provide an update. We would like you to take a motion on this, but what we understand from Lee County is it, we're a little bit, uh, earlier than the actual reranking of the project. So, so, um, we do bring forward new projects for the countywide LMS list. Um, they are not updating that right now, but when they do, we would like to have these as our priorities so that staff's able to move forward. Um, what we do, what we did find out now is that there's a remaining approximately four million dollars in the prior LMS list, and we are, um, very fortunate to announce that Lee County staff is recommending that the home buyout program, uh, move forward. They have to be our, um, advocate for that process as it comes through Lee County. So the staff will be recommending approximately four million.
It's less restrictive.
Which, and it's, it's also less restrictive money. It is not income-based, um, for the home buyout program. So it does require a match, which we do have budgeted in our CIP. Um, so we wanted to thank the, the Lee County staff for that, um, but Joan LaGuardia and, and Dave Horner, but, and Ellie for her work on this as well. So there's more information to come on that, but we would like a motion on this. I just wanted to explain that the actual LMS project and the reranking is not happening yet. We'll keep you aware of that, but if you would like to approve the ranking of these, then we have our marching orders when that opportunity comes available.
Make a motion.
Ranking.
Second.
Any comment? Well, you said the ranking, Mo.
So for, for, in the green sheet, we discussed the mobile home elevations, the voluntary home buyout program, and the old city library building becoming a hurricane-hardened project. We liked your authorization to advocate for those when the opportunity happens for us to update the Lee County Local Mitigation Strategy List.
We don't have to put them in order?
No, no.
Okay. All right, uh, Mo, please.
Councilmember Cory?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Corumba?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
And I'd still like a tour of the old library.
Wouldn't you address the chair before you start yapping?
Well, no, because you always say no.
I do not. Did you want to say something? Please, let's move on. Okay, anything else from the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Council, the last announcement, just a reminder that we are closed for the Thanksgiving holiday next week, Thursday and Friday, to wish, uh, the council, our citizens, and our staff a very happy Thanksgiving.
Well, thank you. Okay, Mayor and Councilmembers' reports. I sat with Jesse. What a wonderful, um, documentary yesterday, or the day before.
Oh, for Fiesta Benita, thank you, that was.
Yeah, that was very good.
Outreach Committee did a really good job on Fiesta Benita. Um, thank you very much to them, if y'all didn't see it. Um, hopefully you get an opportunity, they did a very, very good piece on, uh, really the city holistically. And it, it was, it covered a lot of the things we have going on, and it was just really beautifully put together. So if you haven't seen it, uh, I hope you get an opportunity to. Um, I wanted to thank Lee County, this pilot program is huge. I think that honestly, we are very blessed and honored for them to do a year pilot here in Benita Springs. Um, it's gonna, I mean, just thinking about it, you know, folks who are just kinda surfacely listening while that was going on, I mean, hypothetically, come January, at ten AM, I can have them pick me up from an app on my phone for a dollar fifty, they can drive me to Lover's Key, I can go to the beach for the day, uh, and set up the time they're gonna pick me back up, and I can do that entire thing for three dollars. Not have to deal with parking. That's pretty amazing. Um, on top of that, you know, a lot of these folks, prior to that, were literally sitting at the bus stop. So now it's gonna come to their house and pick them up and do these things. So I think it's really, it, I love to see technology and transportation come together, and I'm really, you know, I'm thankful to Lee County and the work they put together, uh, for choosing Benita Springs. I think, once it really gets out there, this is gonna be really, uh, impressive. And hopefully, something that the county continues to grow. Um, John Jenkins, really good update from BSU, you're not still here, no. Um, the Septic Stuff, really good content, I appreciate that. And then, uh, last but not least, I wanted to give a shout out to the Benita Springs Wildcats, who finished the season undefeated last weekend. Um, and you guys will actually get to meet some of them next week when I have them in. They beat St. Carlos in the finals, two undefeated teams. And, uh, it went to the very last minute, Benita Springs won it, won in a, a very close and awesome game, so. Uh, that's all I've got, thanks.
Beautiful, thank you, Jesse. Laura, please, you have anything?
I'm good, sir, thank you very much.
You're good, okay, how about Amy?
Um, just a couple of quick things. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank Captain Lee. Uh, he was kind enough to spend some time with me. I happened to attend a meeting in Naples where the, uh, sher- Collier County Sheriff gave a talk on human trafficking. So of course I had to come home and say, well, what do we do about Benita and human trafficking? So I, I suggest if anybody is interested in that topic, you'll see the fine work that's being done by our Lee County Sheriff. Uh, not just our community people, but, you know, the, the entire county, uh, effort is, is, is pretty robust, and I felt very comfortable having that conversation. Um, and, uh, you already know about art in public places, because we already talked about moving all the, uh, the statues around. Uh, but I do also wanna say that I took Fred's suggestion up to meet with Comcast, and I, I can reiterate that if any council people want to meet with them, that was a very instructive meeting about the coverage that extends throughout Benita Springs. But most importantly, the offer they made to disadvantage people who can't afford or, uh, having access to the internet and to phone service. They already have an existing community project there, and I, we have, we have the information, and we could spread that around, but, uh, it's well worth spending some time with them. Um, and I just wanna mention Veterans Day, which I, again, compliment the Veterans Committee for organizing that. And it was so nice to see, uh, the Veterans Memorial Bridge sign, uh, that we'll eventually get on our, our bridge. But I also have.
But it's on, Kyle did it.
Oh, did they did it? Oh, I did, I, we'll have to go look at it then. Uh, but anyway, just announcing that at the meet, at the ceremony was wonderful. And I particularly was moved by the recognition of, uh, our losses in Afghanistan of the thirteen servicemen and women who, who were killed. Uh, and it meant a lot to me, because it seemed like they were, had been forgotten. And we don't forget people in Benita Springs, so we should be proud. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, Mike?
I'd also like to thank, uh, Lee County for the, uh, the new bus service that they'll be doing. It sounds very interesting, and I think it will help out, uh, make it a lot easier. Uh, I know the number one complaint I always heard was the wait time in between buses, so. Uh, this will be on demand, and I think it should help out.
I hope so, yes, Chris.
Uh, I had a conversation with Lee County School District, uh, seeking some clarification on the hotspots that, uh, they, in, they contracted with Summit, uh, to install, uh, to promote, uh, to, so the kids can utilize their Chrome, uh, tablets, uh, for schoolwork. Uh, I was assured that, uh, there are enough hotspots in Benita Springs for that to take place. Uh, but there is a continuing problem of communications, uh, between the school district and, uh, especially the Spanish-speaking community, the Haitian-speaking community, and so forth. So, uh, they recognize that there are, are students still going up to new horizons. Uh, in addition, staff and I met with Comcast, and it's interesting in that Comcast has entered into an agreement with Pueblo Nuevo to set up a hotspot for the kids that go there. So we have this situation where, uh, Lee County Schools has provided hotspot, hotspots throughout Benita Springs, the kids should not have to leave home to, to connect. Uh, but that information is having a problem getting home to the parents. The parents may not understand it. Uh, so, um, I've asked, uh, Lee County, and they've agreed that, uh, the school district has agreed to, uh, uh, do an internal survey through the administrators of the school to try to get a handle on the size of the problem. Uh, and Comcast has agreed to, uh, push some more information through the schools about their Internet Essentials program. They've done that one time. One of the Lee County School Board members said that she got, uh, four copies of it when, so it did make it to the kids, and sometimes it makes it to the parents. I remember when I was a kid, not everything made it home, but, uh, but anyway, it, uh, it's sort of good news in that there are resources out there for the kids to tap. the kids to tap. They shouldn't have to go to a hot, to a remote location to do their schoolwork. But we may have something here that we can have the outreach committee take on as far as getting, making sure that the information is getting home to the.
Like the 999 internet, like, I mean, there's, yeah, people just don't know about it. And there's a lot of people in that area you're talking about that would qualify. And then instead of paying 60 bucks a month, they're now paying 999. But how do we get that to them? Yeah, I think, yeah, I would definitely talk to outreach and be open to them participating and trying to get that out there. But I think we need to, I told, when I met with them, I actually met with their comms person was with them, and I said that I would hook them up with Laura and that they could put something together that we would then get out through the, from the city side. So if they were to put together something, you know, it's, they gave me a little placard, so I'm sure you saw it too. But something that we can get to the community and just kind of, you know, if you fit this box, this box, and this box, you can qualify to pay this month a month. But real simple, but it has, and then we can get it out to them. But I think it needs to be something done by them because from a marketing side, they have to pay for it, I think. And then we can give it out.
Yeah, the, the other problem with it is that, you know, the, the, the family has to be qualified. So who does the qualification?
Yeah, that's true, too. Yeah, that's true, too.
It might be Lee County. I don't know. But the one good thing is I think that the, Lee County is supposed to get, Lee County School District is supposed to get back, back to me with some information as to what the size of the problem is. So hopefully they'll do that and I'll get it after Thanksgiving.
And it really is the Lee County School Department that should be spearheading this because they have access into, like, every school should have that information going into, and, and the principals of those schools should be more proactive. And even if people are still going to New Horizons, you know, maybe at that point of service, some, there might be some volunteers that would go in and say, hey, I see you're doing this, but you, do you know? And then have access and, access to, and the community, the Internet Essentials, there are not many questions that are being asked that they, pretty much anybody who just applies for it can get it. So, well, I thought that was pretty good. But we, we as a council can't advocate for one service over another. That's where the problem is. So it has, I, I really think that, thank you for going out to Lee County Schools because I think that's where the responsibility has to be taken. And, and we can't, we can't do it from the R N very easily, I don't think.
Okay, Fred?
Yeah, I was gonna.
Just wondering the time.
I was gonna point out that Arlene and Matt, Feeny and I, I think it was after that industrial Horizon Council awards, we, we took the time and went out and looked at that intersection, which is gonna be pretty much representative of what we would do at Beach Road and 41. I recommended before that you take the trip and do it yourself. After having been there, I would double down and say you really ought to do it because it'll open your eyes to what we could put through 41 and Beach Road if we can get that implemented into hard brick and mortar, so to speak, instead of a on-paper idea. So that's number one. The other thing I was gonna tell you, there are discussions with MPO on 41 South. But the good thing about that is by them improving that road, that's allowed our staff, I believe, to come up with an idea of another shortcut around 41 and, Old 41 and Beach Road to take it, as stuff that wants to go to I-75 and take it around that intersection to reduce the traffic. So I, so there's, I think that's, that's a good thing. And I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And it is, the, the key thing is to be thankful for what we have.
Amen, amen.
So that'll, that'll do it for now. Oh, one other thing that, and this, the Florida League of Cities is trying to get this set up. I think they will have success. And that is they're gonna try and have across the state of Florida, a congressional town hall for the congressman for a given district. For example, if Byron Donalds agrees to participate, which I believe he will, there would be, every city that's in his district would be online with him on a Zoom. But I'm gonna advocate to the Florida League of Cities that if they do this right, they ought to at least allow John Q. Public to sit in, not this, and maybe a couple questions from just residents as well. But it'll be an opportunity for the cities to talk to our congressman about the FEMA flood insurance and all the problems of what's going on and that, many other things. So, and Jesse would, I'm sure, be the, the lead person. I just happen to be the one that was asked to contact Byron and Jesse, so.
Okay, I too also met with Comcast. And any student that is getting a subsidized lunch is qualified for the 995 a month internet connection, which I also believe that even 995 a month would be covered by a donation or by Love Inc. or some other charitable organizations that make sure that people are able to sign up and get their internet. Comcast covers the city. They're wired all over the city. There's no need, there's no need. And this infrastructure bill that was passed does not, does not pay for anything. It's not a new internet connection. So we have no new internet connection necessary in the city. So that's good news. That's all I have. Now we have minutes? Anybody care to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Let's see, a vote please.
All in favor, aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Caramba?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Okay, we have public comment. Yeah, I thought you were gonna be here. I got your email.
That's great. I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Council. I'm Kyle Moran. I'm a 30-year resident of Benita Springs and the surrounding areas, having first moved to Benita 30 years ago. So I, I, and I'm, I'm glad to be here with sort of real-time update on a longstanding effort to talk about designating downtown pedestrian-friendly for bikers and walkers. This is a process that's incorporated a lot of feedback from folks in the downtown and even from our very capable city staff. It's an important issue. In fact, this morning I received an email from Caitlin Emery and Brandon Shuey, who own Downtown Coffee and are in the process of opening the Bohemian Restaurant in that same area. And while those duties keep them from being here, they asked that I read this. It says, "As business owners in the downtown area, we fully support the effort to deem downtown Benita Springs as pedestrian-friendly. We observe the heavy traffic of commercial vehicles daily and frequently receive negative feedback about the noise and traffic while guests try and enjoy our patio, particularly from people with small children who feel it is unsafe. We believe the rerouting of these commercial vehicles would positively impact the downtown community." Thank you, Caitlin Emery and Brandon Shuey. So to take a step back, the city, our city has exerted great effort and incurred great costs to, to create a pedestrian downtown in that Old 41 area, particularly between Terry and Benita Beach Road. As part of that effort, we've installed a lot of road improvements. So better sidewalks, roundabouts, pedestrian crossings, paved rumble zones, pedestrian refuges, landscape medians. We enacted this whole new form-based code with the intent of creating a pedestrian-friendly area. And despite all of that work, it remains heavily trafficked by commercial traffics that use it as a, a throughway, despite the fact that they could go north-south on US-41 Imperial Parkway and/or I-75. That traffic, that through traffic is fast, heavy, loud, and dangerous. It, it threatens walkers and bikers down there. It damages the improvements that I just listed that we've made to that downtown recently. And as you hear from the owners of restaurants in the area, negatively impacts the outdoor experience down there, making it less appealing for, for people to visit and more challenging for business owners to do, to do business down there. So at, at this time, after incorporating a lot of feedback in this process, particularly from staff, I, I think it's appropriate, appropriate to, to come to you again and to ask you to, to request that city staff formulate and provide to council a proposed ordinance designating downtown pedestrian-friendly. And staff is clearly in the best position to outline the parameters to this. But if, if there's specific feedback that I've received, this should be for a very specific area, and it should incorporate common sense exceptions. So for instance, it would sound something like, "To protect walkers and bikers in downtown, the ordinance restricts heavy, loud, dangerous commercial traffic, travel on Old 41 between Terry Street to the north and Benita Beach Road to the south." The ordinance would follow the examples set by many other downtowns in this state and nationwide in making common sense exceptions for commercial truck travel downtown. Those would include engaging, when engaging in pickups or deliveries from the, that perimeter, the, inside that perimeter, when traveling to or from a, a parking terminal located inside that perimeter, so a place where they leave those trucks overnight, when traveling to or from a repair facility within that perimeter, and when traveling to or from their residence within that perimeter. So in conclusion, after a lot of this hard work and some really great advice from staff, I hope that you'll seriously consider, maybe as soon as your next meeting on December 1st, asking staff to, to move forward in creating a proposal for an ordinance to make downtown pedestrian-friendly. Thank you very much.
Lieutenant, could you come forward and please address the, the speed on Old 41? Is that a problem? I, I don't get there very often. You, you get, you know what, you know what it looks like. How much problem is there there?
Good morning.
Morning, yes, sir.
Lieutenant Jeff Dekus from the Sheriff's Office. We, we have had the stalker out there, and we've had it out there now for about 10 days. And so we have had some, some issues down there, but the, the speed is not really the issue. The crosswalks are not really becoming the issue that, that are down there. We've run several traffic operations down there as well throughout the last probably 10 days, to be specific, to make sure that, that we weren't having issues down there. So I don't think that it's a speed issue as far as that goes. We've also gone down there and looked at the commercial traffic over the last 10 days to, to see what that commercial traffic looks like down there. I, I wrote the, the summary for it, so I do know exactly what that commercial traffic looked like over the last 10 days. We sat down there for about, for about 51 hours, give or take, over the last 10 days. So that would be a couple hours here and there, as much as we could as, as far as running that traffic goes. And we were a little less than probably 50, 50 commercial vehicles running through there. Those times were in the morning, they were in the afternoon, they were, you know, various times of day. And we didn't count like yard trucks and things of that nature. So those would be dump trucks and things we thought were, we would consider commercial vehicles that we thought were running through there. So there is, and there are some commercial vehicles that are, are using it as a cut-through, but they are not speeding. We're not finding the speeding. The, the median speed that was going through there was right around 19 miles per hour. So we're not really seeing speed as being a factor through there.
Do you know any other areas in, in the county that restrict commercial vehicles on their roads?
Well, there are, there are several areas actually that do restrict commercial vehicles, and one of them being Logan, that we worked on pretty hard out there that actually Collier County restricted their section of Logan.
Collier County came through. Did Lee County come through?
Lee County did not come through on that one, and didn't have to, as a matter of fact, because once they restricted that on the Collier County side where all the dump trucks were coming from, it actually helped us in, in, in the factor of, of having those dump trucks come through there. So it really kind of worked for our benefit with, with that. Councilman Forbes, we worked pretty hard, you know, looking at that. So we don't really have an issue out there as far as that goes.
Anywhere else that we have limited?
I, I believe Naples has one on Fifth Avenue down there as far as their cut-through goes. And they, they restrict the, the amount of vehicles that go through down on Fifth Avenue that come through the, the city of Naples. I don't know exactly how they police that, but it is similar to, to what he was speaking of, and that is, you know, they can, they can make their deliveries, they can do their things however they do that. I don't know if there's a time restriction on that, but they do have some restrictions as far as that goes. So they are able to, to make their deliveries and do their things that they're, they're allowed to do, but there are some restrictions as far as commercial vehicle traffic goes.
I would find it hard to educate these people. How do you tell people, you know, you know, the education of it?
The other thing is, you know, it makes it very difficult to, to really kind of gauge. I mean, you have to see them enter into there and exit out, you know, to be able to enforce that. So I mean, you're, you're talking having to sit there and watch them actually enter into that section and follow them out of that section to be able to, to cite someone, you know, for, for going through there. So I mean, it makes it difficult to police it. However, you know, I, I do understand exactly, you know, what he's talking about, you know, as far as, you know, commercial vehicles going through there, and it can be a nuisance. But it does make it difficult to police.
And the, the, the surfaces, the road surface is made to slow the cars down, but it also makes more noise.
That's correct. And, and that's what we see when we do those studies and we, and we looked at that with the stalker. I, I noticed that, you know, 19 miles an hour with the speed limit being 25 is kind of interesting in that because the traffic, because the lanes are so small or, or narrow, you know, that's what slows that traffic down to begin with. Plus you have the pedestrian traffic with, with the narrow lanes. And it makes it difficult to drive through there anyway. You're, you're watching for traffic, you're watching for other pedestrians walking through, bicycles, things of that nature. Therefore you have the slower traffic going through there. During the daytime, you have heavy traffic, which makes it even slower, which is good. That keeps people watching and, and things of that nature. We have very few traffic accidents in there. The roundabouts actually slowed that traffic accident rate down. And when we do have accidents in there, they're more than likely gonna be just a fender bender or things of that nature. They're not gonna be horrific traffic accidents.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. You're doing a good job. You're a safe community.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.